You have a cell phone with you, would you please silence it, I just did mine, we're not interrupting during the meeting. Uh, roll call. Sure, Mayor Tecci.
Here.
President Prokopio.
Here.
Councilwoman Blunt.
Here.
Councilman Borders.
Here.
Councilwoman Kelly.
Present.
Councilwoman Lambert.
Present.
Councilwoman Smythe.
Here.
Councilwoman Walker.
Here.
Well, President accounted for. Uh, I should have done a survey of this, but if, I'd like to ask that we have a moment of silence. One of our, I don't know if Peggy or you knew this, I'm not sure. Yeah, one of our longtime residents who moved out a long, a while ago that were very active in the borough. And, uh, was on the swim club board and was instrumental in having the swimming pool renovated, probably thirty years ago now. Uh, I just got notifications tonight that he passed away. Um, in February, he had moved to Florida a number of years ago, so if we can have a moment of silence. He's one of the re, but building blocks of Alden Borough, those of us that have been around for a while though, know of him. He often won a lot of prizes for his Christmas decorations.
Walnut Avenue.
Yeah, so we have a moment of silence. Thank you, Dave Haycock, he doesn't have any details, so we have to figure out some.
Sorry to hear about him.
All right, for this evening, you've got some papers handed out to you, the O'Neills are here. I sent you a thing about their situation, that they were cited because they have a tree that's in the heat middle area. And, uh, they have been very proactive, they came to us to locate. And have been looking to re-establish our shade tree commission. And after talking with them, they have a lot of other ideas, they've done a decent amount of research. So I will turn the floor over to the O'Neills for the President, you're up gentlemen.
Okay.
Gentlemen and ladies.
I don't want to read through the whole thing, but basically this outlines our, do you think our goal is? To allow homeowners to use borough rights of way. Um, to plant street trees specifically, uh, which would require, uh, some update to the current ordinances, which are basically grass only at this time. Um, we've surveyed many burrows in our areas that do allow these kinds of activities. Um, this could be administered by the borough. And also we're indicating that an arborist, we conduct by annual about reviews of anything that's in rights of way. Um, the second bullet is shade tree commission, who they are, what their mission is, what the work of the committee would be, or what we think it should be. And also about parks and recs is the third bullet. Um, we think this might have some benefit to report to the parks and rec as a matter of procedure, rather than be sort of a standalone entity. The reason being is Parks and Rec has already done an extensive survey of various thorough own properties and rights of ways. And sort of prioritize what they thought based on resident input, uh, those areas that should be addressed first. Um, so. The backside talks about an environmental action committee, which also, you know, which the borough does not have, but other surrounding boroughs do have. Um, and it just talks about what we've already done in terms of spreadsheets, looking surveys of other boroughs. And what other, other shade tree commissions are, you know, chartered to do. So we've already put together sort of a straw man, or called straw man, a draft of a shade tree commissions, missions and functions. And also sort of a, uh, a call, a calling together of the current Alden Borough ordinances. And sort of one by one says, well, this is what we should look at as far as making any changes to existing ordinances. Uh, so that's pretty much sums it up as far as what we've done so far. So if there's any questions about next steps for us.
We, we talked about this at the plant seed exchange, so, uh, they've already been out recruiting individuals that might want to serve on the shade tree commission. The other items were add-ons after they started that process. Uh, we used to have a shade tree commission in Alden Borough, we do not officially have an ordinance for one. So, uh, I think the intention is to utilize their work and the people that have offered, and they have submitted their stuff up to our boards of commissions request. That will appoint them in likelihood at our next meeting as an advisory committee. Since they've already done a decent amount of work and they can work more formally through that and eventually put together an ordinance that we can eventually pass. For how to shade tree commission, as well as look at whether we want to do with an invite, environmental advisory committee or not. Uh, which we do not have, so, and Parks and Recs, I would have to say Mr. Walker, he spearheaded the effort that we had in our grant. Several years ago, and we did an extensive survey. And what we would like to see, had multiple meetings. And, uh, the rec board under his guidance has done an extensive amount of work, including the second annual seed exchange, just happened last Saturday. So, uh, I'm sure we can work on something like that, so I'll leave any, that's the form of what we're looking to do at the moment, so I don't know if anybody has any other questions, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Really great, this is, thank you, above and beyond what I think we were expecting, so it's awesome. Um, regarding the environmental advisory commission, you know, I'm kind of thinking, though obviously this is something you all are going to have to consider, whether you want to do a shade tree commission. Expand the recs board to be a parks and rec, or whether you want to have a full environmental advisory commission. The nice thing about EAC is that it's wider in scope, it would include, you know, because we kind of say that we want to, or at least on an annual basis, be evaluating, bringing back recycling. Uh, we toast to stop that because basic action reasons, it's enormously expensive and there was no guarantee would end up being recycled. So, we were finding that, um, so anyway, that might be something that could be within scope of an environmental, environmental, but it sounds like an EAC would sort of. Subsume a, the, the responsibilities of, uh, shade tree commission, does that seem accurate to you?
I think it could, but, um.
You think it's a different scope?
I think there, well, I guess, uh, you could think of the shade tree commission as people being maybe more, like a little bit more background in trees. Able to identify trees, I don't know if you would want that body to be able to do a health and hazard, hazard assessment of. Street trees, you know, that are, that are in the community, but it seems like, I, I would personally prefer having arborists to do that type of work, but, um.
As opposed to a group of residents who may or may not have.
Exactly, exactly, so, um, but if you look at the kind of what we outlined for. The scope of a shade tree commission, presumably that work could also take place under. For somebody in the EAC.
Do you happen to know from the, the research you've done so far, if there are, if any of the surrounding municipalities, the kind of thinking land that everybody would have, have an EAC already?
Yes, seventeen.
But, but, but neighboring.
Uh, neighboring.
So that would be Clifton, Lansdowne, Darby Township, Collingdale, or who, I'm missing. Yeah, no, that's not, that's not neighboring.
Darby Township.
Clifton, Lansdowne.
Upper Darby Dunn.
Upper Darby.
Upper Darby Dunn.
Upper Darby Dunn, who else did?
Um, I'm not sure.
Okay.
We can certainly research that for you.
Yeah, I was asking, because I did see, after I got your email, I thought that, um, you know, I, I went to that, uh, we conserve PA dot org. And it mentioned that, you know, one thing that could be considered by municipality is that you actually partner, you know, you, you kind of with, with neighboring municipalities. And create an EAC that would be joint, um, which frankly may make sense because, you know, our footprint is small. And it might make sense to have a more holistic approach, um, if we were to do the EAC.
So Lansdowne does have an EAC.
They do, I, I, I'm, I would have been surprised if they didn't.
And then a shade tree commission, which I plan to attend some of their local meetings of these shade tree commissions and see how they're approaching things and what they're thinking. So we can bring that back here.
That's great as well, thank you.
Springfield also has one.
Any other, who'd you say?
Springfield.
Yeah, any other questions from council members?
I do.
Mr. Walker.
What's the advantage, or is there an advantage of, uh, having the shade tree commissions, the EAC, uh, parks and rec, uh, when it comes to grants for applying?
It's a good question, particularly if, I wonder if an EAC would, I'm sure that all of our thing benefits you in terms of going for grants.
That's because I submitted a similar document to Sue, and at the end of it, I identified places that we could apply for grants. Especially because if we align ourselves with the Delaware County Sustainability Plan, which I outlined also in that document, I sent that to you too.
That was quite a lengthy document. You had a little, you had a little help from May I on that.
Well, you know, I, I'm saying.
She cited that.
If she did cite it, yes, I'm not saying she was doing it on the, on the.
On the download, on the DL. Uh, thank you, I'm, uh, thank you also very much, um, so that, so is that something that you have an interest in? I'll take a break, you know, what was, I didn't quite follow what your, what was your point about, um, any AC regarding grants?
Well, no, just at the end of the document that I sent you, I identified places that we could apply for grants to, um, to get funding to plant trees, get funding to. Um, do the surveys for our sewer system, um, and in that document, I also identified what the major risks are for this area. And one of the outcomes was to do the shade tree, which I knew we were thinking of, so, you know, um. Our area, the biggest concerns that we have are the heat, which the shade tree commission would help to, to ameliorate that. Um, and then the other one is the concern over whether, how well our sewer system will manage increasing, increasingly bad storm water. Um, and that actually, we should be partnering because our water goes down to Darby. So, you know, what we do will affect, uh, the municipalities around us.
Though, but I think Councilman Walker's point is, is, is good, which is like, would one of these, like particularly, I think an EAC, if that would.
Right, which one is more likely to receive the grants, uh, in a wider breadth of grants?
EAC.
EAC would be.
And under that EAC umbrella, we could look for money for shade trees.
Okay.
As long as you're not allowed to be matches required by the borough.
Says our treasurer.
I mean, we're.
Because if, the lowest is going to be fifteen percent, they can go up to thirty percent.
Sometimes we get lucky, this is what we did for the Parks and Recs, and you had to have a.
As long as you're examining that and everything, it's good, but we, we.
I haven't committed anything.
No, but what I'm saying, but what I'm just, I just kind of wanted to throw that in as my little part of the thing, because, um. We've applied for a lot of grants and we've gotten a lot of grants, but we have to show, to get that money, we have to show proof, and then we also have to match a lot of times, so.
Yeah, we have the grants as free money.
Or we should kind of look at the fine print.
And the rehearsed.
I'm all for it.
Yeah, we have to spend money in order to ask for the grant, each one.
But I think there's, I mean, above and beyond just like a specific committee, even just the borough parks and recreation, there are partnership opportunities, which I know they already have. The O'Neills already have contacts with PHS, because PHS is a partner, I think, in Swarthmore. And helps Swarthmore get the trees and be able to offer like trees for sale at a discount because of partnership with PHS. So then you've got like Penn State Master Gardeners, and there's the, you know, Arbor Day Foundation, and Tree City USA, and Bee City, and all of those. Other types of things that you could potentially bring in, um, under that umbrella, so it doesn't necessarily, I, at least in my mind, I don't think that. Having one instead of the other would be negative.
That you couldn't have both in a little, sure.
I think, I think, I think you should have both. I mean, the expertise of an EAC would not be.
Part of that is getting people to serve on boards and commissions, if you know about civil service commissioners, for two years. Uh, we've mentioned that, I know Jim, you and your wife are both tree tenders?
No, myself and my daughter, and also.
Oh, you're a tree tender as well?
So we just started.
At the seed exchange program, they did have a master gardener, I think thanks to Sue, was there with a nice presentation. So, Mr. Ross.
We also have a couple of other residents, Dan Connolly, who's a, an arborist, of course, Steve, uh, who works with trees, I think.
Steve's already put in his.
And he is not a resident of the borough, so I, his efficacy, he could be an advisor, but his efficacy to serve, I don't know. Uh, standard of that, there may be availability.
And he could be in our tree tenders, Alden tree tenders, which is not, you know, commissioned people.
Have you spoken with Dan Connolly?
Uh.
He was there this week.
Yeah, I saw him at the plant seed, seed exchange.
I think we tried to reach out to him, the email, but.
Well, hopefully, you know, he'll, uh, he'll want to participate, he's, he's got a lot going.
So I personally think it would, I mean, so if you're saying the shade.
The plan is, we're going to set up an advisory committee of all the people, and you, you had new people that signed up on Saturday. They're going to send in their stuff that they haven't already.
Okay.
I sent you dates where the building was available.
Yes.
And you have to get back to me with the date that you want to meet, you could meet. The week after the sixteenth, and I gave you available dates for that, and then you could set a permanent date down the road, but you, you, I gave it to you. So you could solicit the people that you have advised, advising, or had recruited to find out when they would be best available, and they would meet in this building right here.
I'm thinking April thirtieth, just as a, off the top of my head, that way it'll give me a chance to go to some of these other shade tree commission meetings, like Lansdowne and Springfield. Okay, and, you know, bring back some.
Well, if you sincerely want to do that, I'll have Mr. White block out the building that day.
So are you back, are you saying that the scope of the, the kind of.
They're going to look at this and see.
They say what their recommendation would be.
Correct.
Thank you, got it.
What does the county have to say? Do they have to provide any input or suggestions for the municipalities?
I know Jennifer did some research on this, because they have a.
Sustainability plan, which does speak to like having more trees and, you know, but I, so I, they, I'm not sure what resources per se, but, um. There is a published, uh, sustainability plan, and I summarized it in that document.
Which I, my own chips, right, I'll send it out to the, to the group. Marlene.
Um, so I think this is a great idea, my only question is. Would we have the type of tree, because there's some trees that are just not healthy, trees that have, so would someone kind of monitor that?
Well, I think for our, for our purchases, if we put them in, they mentioned, we already have a program that we instituted three years ago, we have an arborist. Who comes in to look at all the borough properties every other year, and we did a lot of trimming two years ago, because it had been a while. Um, and there are trees, we discussed the fact that there's a lot of state trees that are missing, when I was growing up, Alden Avenue had a lot of big trees. A lot of elm trees, they got taken out by the Dutch elm tree disease, right now, they're saying that we have ash trees down here, and ash trees, that would be ash wood. There's something that's decimating the population, and then there's a question of, you have native trees that are native to this area, which would probably, and that would be part of their recommendation. And we would utilize that for the borough park that I mentioned, out here, across the parking lot. Gotta be fifteen years ago, through a tree tender from Collingdale, the, those five trees that were planted over there came from that project. And I know a few years ago Lansdowne did one where they gave out bare root ones, which are really easy to deal with, and for the residents to plan as well. Of course, we can't force anybody to do anything, because it's private property, but we can re, we could recommend what would be best for the area, and I mean, that would be part of what they would recommend. We do have a list in our code with what we are, what we recommend when you do development to be planted on the, on the properties.
The borough couldn't, uh, make how the ordinance that would state that certain trees can't be planted?
Nope.
Yes, it can.
I don't, you can?
We, we, we made an ordinance that said you can't plant bamboo.
Oh.
You can absolutely make an ordinance, because you can't plant this type of tree because of that, or this type of tree, and the thing is, if you're gonna.
That should have been bamboo.
I think we're, we're jumping super, super far ahead.
Way down the road.
The reason that I asked that was, I had four trees on my property, and. I, I forget what kind of tree, it was huge, and they tend to fall, so we had short roots. And one Sunday night, I heard a big boom, I thought transmission blew what it was to treat. So thank God they didn't break anything, anything perfectly, and at that time, I wanted hedges, and I asked the guy, could I keep it?
Just leave it there.
But anyway, but that's why I asked.
I mean, there's, there's a lot to consider when you're thinking about like where, if you're specifically looking at street trees. You obviously have a smaller patch that you're usually planting in, you're close to infrastructure and things like curbs and sidewalks, so different trees have different roots, you have, uh, wires. We've got trolley lines in town, so there's definitely those kinds of restrictions, I mean, we, we actually, from the development side, restricted. What the cute smart was cut in when they were doing their development, because they had suggested some stuff that was going to be the giant tree that would then get cut in half and look really ridiculous. So, um, there, you can definitely do that, but I think this is really just, you can see the effort that the O'Neills have, and passion that the O'Neills have put into this. And I think this gives us the opportunity to say formally, let's, let's start up an advisory committee, similar to the recycling. That can do a lot of this research and answer a lot of the questions that we have right now, like, does an EAC get more grants than a shade tree commission? Or something like that, or what are the options, just listing them out, and kind of give us as a borough. A, a plan for making this something that we can make more permanent in our governance, is what I'm thinking, does that sound?
Yes, ma'am.
It's like a good summary?
Is there anybody from the, from the pitch in our meeting that was like?
Well, I.
Oh, yeah.
If you, if you're ready to go with thirtieth, I want everybody to know if they want to come.
It's still ten.
Because I mean, I was like, a, a shade tree commission is probably a very good idea, uh, because I've, I've noticed a lot of big trees coming down around here. Uh, you know, and I'm, I'm thinking that the, the trees in Alden are rapidly approaching, if not already exceeding their useful life. You know, it's like some are dying, some are being, you know, uh, you know, so be. Uh, probably, you know, just what, what could be on, what they should have been allowed.
A lot of them have been chucked off by ivy, English ivy.
Oh, English ivies.
I mean, yeah, my backyard neighbor, she had a monster oak tree growing on her, right, and it grew all over my property, and it didn't look to be a structurally good tree. And she let the whole trunk, it all, uh, covered in ivy, so I pruned off what was on my side, and which she was none too happy. But, uh, you know, it's, um, I, 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 you know, feared for my, you know, the, uh, my properties. And unfortunately, her sweet come tree was what launched a wind through my garage roof, yeah, so she wouldn't do anything about that either.
Well, tree tenders, uh, one of the objectives is that we call it free the trees, which is basically going to trees and cutting out a section of that English ivy, and the rest of it will eventually die off. So it's a volunteer effort, free the trees.
Is that on, is that on, uh, uh, borough property, or would that be?
It could be homeowners borough, it doesn't matter, we're, we're here to serve the residents of both, whether it's borough, private residents, we're agnostic.
How would that work if you identify trees that are, that do need to be removed, and this is probably a little bit more detailed. Um, and there's like, yeah, I understand that this tree costs three thousand dollars to cut down, but I'm not going to pay for it, but it could be a danger to, uh, the surrounding area. How would the shade tree mission like help support that? Are they going to ask the borough for money, or like, how would that work?
I think that would be a question that needs to be further researched.
So, that's just one example.
Yeah, there's, there's. Yeah, that, and treasurer.
I live up on Sylvan Way, which formerly my backyard, part of my backyard was all woods. And then when they built the industrial part, they gave us a section of that, which had probably about two hundred, three hundred year old, um, even older than that, oak trees. I have, and I love my trees, I, I love them in the summer, I hate them when we have to break the leaves and everything in the winter, in the fall. But my question is, would your tree tenders be a, would part of your mission be like, could you come and look at our trees and actually say, hey, these aren't healthy, you have to keep. I mean, and I would comply with whatever you would say, but I just, like, would you have the ability to do that?
I think as, as tree tenders, yes, and we would bring in like an arborist, like recruited Steve.
Steve McFarlane, yeah, yeah.
I mean, he's Alden's arborist, he would be my go-to, even though he's not a resident of Alden.
Yeah.
Uh, he gets some, some contract work with the borough.
Yeah, he, we did, I wanted to start a commission, and he did all the trees up there, and, you know, the bushes and all, but, so, I'm just, that could be part of your mission, right, to help us.
And it's nice to have an arborist as part of the commission.
Exactly, yeah, 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 yeah. Because I get worried every time the wind blows that, but I don't want to really.
Everybody has a tree still, everybody, I got my own.
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
Any other questions?
I thank you very much for all the helpful work that you've done, and I'll have John block out the thirtieth for the meeting here. Uh, seven thirty for the advisory committee, we'll make appointments at our sixteenth meeting, maybe you've got something else to say.
Little did the borough know.
The hornet's nest that they were kicking when they gave the.
Well, our current ordinance does not allow a tree to be planted on the right leg, now, if you look around town, before that ordinance was passed, there were dozens of trees. That have ripped up the sidewalk and the curb because an incorrect tree was planted, and I can understand the reason why they passed the ordinance. Because it was much easier to say, no tree gets planted in that area, which is, in my street, it's not even a foot wide. Uh, some people, the O'Neals have a little bit bigger area, and, uh, so that's, I can understand why that happened. You can see sidewalks in circles, you can see curves inside, humps in the middle of the street, because the tree just ripped, moved the sidewalk up. So you have to plant the right kind of tree in the right location, which is how we got into this whole situation. Anything else? Thank you very much for your.
Thank you.
Mayor. Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. President, um, okay, I disparage yourself, I do have a lot. So, uh, the first thing is first, so it looks like we're missing one.
I think maybe it's in your office, it's, I think it's at seven or only six here, so anyway.
For the fifteenth and honorable historical commission, loads of proclamations for Juneteenth and Black History Month. Okay, that is that, okay, I want to announce with joy that our own John White has agreed to stay. From the end of the year on a modified schedule, so we're very happy about that. Yeah, I think we're, thank you, John, you do good work.
Prayer's answered.
Yes. Prayer's answered, oh, okay, let me talk to you about EIT, everyone should have, everyone should have received the mailer by now, I proposed, excuse me. I posted the text on the borough website per your request, I put it, the thing.
Is there a link to?
There's a, there's a, yes, in the thing, so if you go to the, on the front page of the borough website, there's a link to EIT. And you can all, even just go to Alden PA dot gov slash EIT. I spoke, okay, uh, I spoke to John Pickerton at Kiso Collections Group about how payroll issues are addressed. Um, our council president himself, if I may say.
Well, let me tell the story, I had mine checked, and the, uh, the payroll company was taking out the EIT, but they were sending it to Upper Darby for all of the employees, because the businesses in Upper Darby. They had gotten a notification, Upper Darby passed it, they didn't, either didn't, didn't process it or never were notified, that at the end of December, the judge ruled that that was not legal, so they were withholding it for everybody. Uh, and I knew it was being withheld, but I, till I double-checked, I didn't know that they were sending it to Upper Darby. And I, my, my fellow coworkers are going to get rebates, because none of them live in municipalities that have any idea, and mine, hopefully, this week, got sent to the right people. So that's one of the reasons why we sent the mailer out, was because we want people to make sure that it's being withheld.
Right.
I know Mr. Morse had a problem, you had a problem, I found out I had a problem, we don't want them to get caught and penalized for something that's wasn't really their fault.
Right, because unfortunately, we did find that they, there's no way of just categorically waiving the penalty in the first year. I guess that's something that the council could, you know, consider at one of, one of those repay or refunds or level if, if possible, but maybe that's something that they'll, they'll want to consider. Uh, so unfortunately, the corrections sometimes do take manual intervention, they have geo-coding that occurs twice or multiple times per week. That is kind of corrects things that come in wrongly, they'd say, okay, this, actually, this guy should have, should have gone to Alden. But, um, the only reliable way of that being corrected on a permanent basis, of course, is for the taxpayer, him or herself, to let the payroll company know. Um, they need to.
So you're saying doesn't, if you're already paying the Darby township, won't it transfer over?
It's supposed to be, okay.
Because I actually, a couple of people.
Things can get screwed up.
Yeah, because I'm also thinking of Dan's business, is it in Upper Darby, or is it Alden?
No, it's in Upper Darby.
I notice Upper Darby, a lot of people refer to that, uh, the, the pines as Alden.
Yeah, but it, it's more of either municipal. Yeah, but it it's marked by the municipality and the and the tax collection group.
Will they send us a form with who paid what?
No, we cannot know the individual. It's that's private records, not allowed. We will just know the number that paid and how much they paid, that's all.
Wow.
Okay.
Because I had two residents come up and say, look, I'm already paying it. I wanna make sure it doesn't go to Darby township that it comes.
Well, that's why we put it out that they should go to their company and make sure.
Well, actually, she did, and the payroll company should have taken care of it, but I can see it didn't happen in my case.
So there are. Doesn't it say on your statement?
That's why I said the actual.
Well, yeah, it should say on your statement. It should say when you get your check, whether, because mine was listed. EIT UD, and I said, wait a minute, this is wrong, guys. Yeah, alright, all people. So they have to call their mail. They should check out their mail.
But the other flip side of that is, a lot of people don't get checks anymore.
Right, right.
Because the rest deposit, so they don't look at it and show.
That's right.
That's why I did.
You can ask your payroll company how you can, I mean, I can, I get my direct deposit, but I can go online and and see my most recent stuff.
We actually get dummy checks, but we don't always pick them up, which I hadn't picked them up in a while, and I went in and checked them, and I'm like, oh boy, this is a, this is a problem.
So is your understanding that actually, like, the Borough, it's Keystone's responsibility to follow up with the taxpayers? If the Borough won't know who's delinquent, who owes penalties.
Uh as far as I understand.
Oh, well, then that would really complicate our ability to.
Well, we've talked about the potential ways around it. We have to figure that. Because we don't want anybody to be penalized the first year. Because I know there's gonna be mistakes. I know people are not gonna get it. One of the reasons we sent it out is because if you're have your own company. Or you're self-employed, you have to file by the end of all April. For the first quarter of the year, and you have to do that every quarter. Or else you're gonna be penalized, which we're trying to make it so that it's not, we're trying to let people know what they have to do, but they don't have that situation.
Well, for sure, there are two ways of avoiding penalties. Uh penalties could only be waived in one of the following two circumstances. This is per their lawyers at Keystone Collections Group. A person would have to pay at least ninety percent of their local earned income tax liability for twenty twenty five. By the fourth quarter filing deadline, which is January fifteenth. Can you do that? Or alternately, number two, they could make four equal quarterly payments totaling hundred percent of the prior year's tax liability. As the tax is newly implemented, safe harbor. Option two would not apply, what I just said, number two, where they do the quarterly payments. I don't know why it wouldn't apply.
Because there's no record. They have no record of their past payments.
I see. So the the bottom line is as long as ninety percent of the taxpayer's liability is paid by January fifteenth, no penalty will be assessed.
Is there, do you have more to continue?
Not about EIT, I got plenty others.
First of all, Jennifer had her hand up first.
No, 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 actually, it got answered.
Okay.
I wanted to know, I wanted to know what was the drop dead date for soon.
January fifteenth, twenty twenty six.
I mean, it doesn't affect me, but.
Right.
Yeah, well.
The Philly workers in here don't have to worry because Philly gets to keep all their tax money.
Well, Melissa, you have a question?
So I had asked my payroll company or my HR department about it, you did payroll, because it was coming up Springfield. And she told me twice, because it's me and my husband. That it's gonna say Springfield no matter what on the pay stub, because that's how the company did it. And I went back again after a conversation, and she said, no, that's how it's gonna be. Is there something from Keystone I can get to give to the company? Because that's that I think is worse. I've been in other places where they've taken the one percent and it went fine, but now that it's through Alden. This payroll company, like, I don't wanna get penalized for the company's fault.
Right, I I mean, I hate to say this because it's annoying and torturous, but I think you need to call Keystone Collects Collection Group. And let them know, uh because I don't think that we, I mean, we could, we could tell them in general. But for your specific case, we're not gonna be able to advocate on your behalf, because we're not allowed to, apparently not allowed to know, so. And just.
I don't know if it's like other.
Plan for it to be a low hold. I tried calling them about a question that I have.
I've dealt with them before.
January, February, they didn't withhold my company, so I need to find out how to pay those two months. And um. The guy actually had them call me. I didn't pick up because it was in the middle of the workday, and when I tried to call them back, I was on hold for under an hour or so. I hung up. Anything else on the EIT?
Uh no- nothing from me.
Sure.
I did not get the mailer. Did you get the mailer, Jenny?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we didn't get the mailer on Southwood Lawn in two houses.
And we don't care about our. Did everybody else on the table get their mailer?
I got ours.
Yes.
Okay, Ross, you get yours?
Um we don't. Uh I don't think we've got ours yet.
When that last.
We.
Yeah.
I got mine on Friday.
Yeah, mine, you should get yours. I'll look, but I I I don't always get them out.
Unfortunately, this has been a continuing problem with the postal system uh here, uh where we people, certain people don't don't get the mailer. I will ask Mr. White, since you now live in a municipality, had a point eight seven earned income tax. And do you get, does your pay stub have?
Two.
It's got two listings, one's going to Alden, one's going to the other Borough.
Correct.
So that should say Alden on your stub, it should.
I I think, unless of what they referred to, and I remember talking to them before, is that they can correct it at the Keystone. Keystone collects for all of Delaware County and a lot of other counties. I think nineteen, they can make, they can make the correction because they know your physical location where you live. And that's where it should go, but it really should show it on your check stub. It really should. Friday, I checked mine up as soon as I gave my new address. It was a medium, it's the next.
Unfortunately, my payroll company's not Friday yet.
Just like, that's why it's been my experience, that if you're trying to get um Keystone or IRS. It's a good idea to call on Friday, late afternoon.
That makes sense. People don't wanna be called with IRS.
They go on the phone with them.
Right.
And that's when I get through, that's when I.
That's more, that's a really good.
The people are looking forward to the weekend. I would mean.
They can't leave.
They can't leave, they're captain.
They gotta stay, they all go on vacation.
So it's our attempt by sending mail out to try and get ahead of this so that we don't run into any further problems. And the way it's run, we may have to do another one in June. Since it's been such an issue.
Well, I can include one one topic I would have coming up this spring newsletter. Oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask John, are there mailers in the office?
Uh hundred fifty of them.
Okay.
Hope stop by.
And if you see your your post person.
Yeah.
Please say, I'm on the council. You know, we've put out these mailers, can you please follow up and make sure your route gets the mailers?
Well, I'll get the one from John first so I can tell them what it is.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so. Mr. Feinberg.
Dan, you have a question, Ross?
Yeah, I do have a question, but I wanna make sure that all the earned income tax stuff is done, because I had a question about John.
Oh.
We we glossed over it.
Well, not really. Did anybody have any questions further on EIT at the moment? No, Mr. Feinberg.
Yes, um John, I I appreciate that you'll be here. Will that include you also mentoring the new Borough manager?
That's council's decision when they hire the new person.
Yeah.
The intention is.
I mean, I have a uh a a date when I'm leaving and it's however they decide.
When they get.
And they and they hire someone after that date?
Well, then I'm not mentoring. The intention of the the um. Finance group who is will be leading that, that we're, we originally, we've approved advertising, we were gonna do it in March. Uh but we're probably gonna do it in September with the look to hire somebody in the neighborhood. And they'll have a period of time with with uh with Mr. White before he leaves.
Okay.
And that's the plan.
I wanna make sure that we've maybe had some as well prepared.
As part of my answer. Yes, the answer is yes.
The the chair of the finance committee speaks. So continue, or excuse me, the chair of the public safety committee.
Part of the finance.
Part of the finance. My apologies, Madam Chairwoman of the Finance Committee. Okay, continuing right along, uh we are in the process of um. Uh doing background checks on a prospective new part-time police officer. Our our schedule is such that we really could use, we got one of our one of our full-time, part-time police officers. Officer Riley Pollock has kind of full-time, full-time gig over in Upper Darby PD. And so we have some availability. Is there any update that you can share at this point?
Uh she's still going through the background um process.
Yeah.
Um she completed polygraph testing um the other night.
Great.
Um so there's still a couple of her uh things that she still has to do, doctors, physical, psychological, things of that nature.
Great.
And then we should be wrapping it up, but based upon news scheduling.
Great. So we'll obviously give more details, obviously, if, you know, once we get through that process. Um spring newsletter, I've got a bunch of topics. If you have topics, let me know. If anyone's willing to write stuff for it, let me know. Is there anyone in the audience who'd be willing to do graphics? The graphics work? I wanted to text you today and right out of the.
All laid out, you need the stuff to put in it.
Okay, thank you.
I like that also compliments, Melissa, she designs a new sign.
It looks, it looks terrific.
Thank you very much.
Moving right along, trash at Giant. Last time I was at Giant, I saw a trash tornado. It was, I practically videotaped it for Ripley's Believe It or Not.
Yeah.
Um so have we made any, were we able, okay. And did, what, so we, I I complained to Giant, and then, of course, they referred me to.
Test of Peskins.
And and what and what did Mr. Peskins say?
I turned it over to our code department, and then the code department called Mr. Peskins.
Okay. And was receptive.
Yeah, he's.
Very receptive, we have a good relationship with him, right? Okay, that's good. So hopefully, um what's that?
The the trash tornado.
Yeah.
Is it like people just leaving trash or trash that do it out of a?
So I know there used to be trash cans underneath that pavilion walkway, store to store. Apparently, I guess during.
They've been removed. Is that something that maybe we could?
I I spoke to him about that.
Okay.
I actually told him the same, that's how I started the conversation.
Because there's no place for people, I mean, people need next to no excuse to litter.
Right.
But don't give them any place to throw stuff at, which you don't. You can carry something into Giant thinking, oh, there'll be a trash can as soon as I walk, no. You have to like, I don't know, it's the hardest.
There are actually two small trash cans inside that you walk in the door.
That are supposed to be for the cleaning cloths that you use to wipe off the the hole.
Those tiny black trash cans.
Little black, tiny black trash cans.
They're small.
But so that's that's even not even Giant's responsibility.
Are you proposing that you put install trash cans?
No, I'm proposing that we require them to have trash.
Property responsibility.
So speaking of Giant, can we do something about the monitoring system there?
Oh, isn't that bizarre?
It's the worst, it is.
It's frightening. Yeah, you get out of your car.
It 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 startles me because I tend to park near that.
Right.
But also, you know, late at night, I hear it.
I was gonna say, it's not, it's it's.
Do you mean to say you hear it from your house?
I can hear it from my, I can during the weather.
Okay, maybe they're here.
And I can hear the trash people going to the Giant at four thirty in the morning.
Oh, gosh, well, you're not so far.
Well, they're not.
They're not so far.
If you stand at the baseball fields, you'll hear.
Yeah.
So maybe that's something we can.
Can I ask them to turn it down?
Well, we do have a decimal level that is over, they.
Because it's really loud.
You do hear it.
Yeah, yeah.
But so how do we go about it?
Unfortunately, due to the theft out of the supermarket, they.
I understand the situation.
They're not the only one. I've been at Home Decos and loads, and the same thing was there with the same warning.
Right, well, maybe they could turn it down.
Yeah, it doesn't have to.
Now Giant has a station officer or.
We already, we already.
They're security guards. Security guards.
So what's the?
Uh, Don, Don should call.
Yeah.
He had his pen in his hand.
He got the hand crapped after. Okay, moving right along. I'm sorry, guys, I know this is ridiculous, but I have a lot, I have a lot to report. IT updates, okay, we're working on replacing two devices, two uh workstations. Uh we got a quote from GoTo that just exceeded the budgeted amount of five thousand dollars.
Five three times.
No, no, that's that was another, I I got a new quote.
Every time.
I didn't look at that.
I I, yeah, but here's the thing, John looks like he may have found the very same ones that they quoted for about half the cost. So we're gonna, obviously, we're not gonna spend money we don't need to spend, so we're gonna evaluate that. Uh one thing we will have to do, council, is our. PCs are so old that we need to get extended security from Microsoft. Starting October seventeen, something like that. That is when Octo- that's when.
Well, that's end of life for Windows ten.
End of life for Windows ten, and that's what, that's.
That's what we have.
That's what we have. We can't go to Windows eleven.
Yeah.
So you know about it. So what we're gonna have to do is pay for, unfortunately, it's not overly expensive, I think it's sixty-one bucks a year. Per PC, but we have to do it.
I thought part of the reason for getting the new.
Well, we wanted to do it for those two, if we do purchase that, but for all the remaining devices.
Because originally, it was supposed to do all of the computers.
Right, and this is just for two. So, you know, we have to figure that out anyway, but I'm just letting you know. I mean, not a, not a huge expense to do that, but we, next year, let's all remember. Madam uh Finance Committee Chair, we have to budget for replacing the rest.
Well, I was gonna say, that increases our security risk, which then GoTo is the charging us more to add additional security.
Exactly.
We did have a budgeted amount to replace in what we thought was sufficient, but when the bid came in, it's three times the amount. I don't know, what was the newest bid?
We all had heart attack.
No one knew it's been.
The newest bid is just for two.
Uh but it's only for two, not for everything.
Just for two.
Yeah.
So additionally, um we're gonna, I'm gonna try to start working on updating the website. The website, frankly, not great as far as up being up to date. Um we're going, starting actually with this very meeting that we're on now. We're gonna start getting, I have a, I created a YouTube channel, I'm gonna start. Actually, this one's gonna get uploaded there, so we're gonna, we're gonna have a link on the Borough website so that they can look at it. At this point, I'm looking at this one and the last one, and we can do more history stuff if we can. But I figure, let's just start going forward. So we're gonna start with the March council meeting. This meeting, I'm gonna try to get them post both uploaded in the next forty-eight hours. And then going forward, Joelle was showing me that we can actually through Zoom livestream to YouTube. Cool.
Yeah.
You know that, I don't know that. So that's what we're gonna try to do.
What happens to the current YouTube?
It gets recorded and then it just.
Uh there was a YouTube channel that was generated by an individual that has control over it. Shouldn't ever have been done that way. The borough should have had control. There's nothing on it.
Still the case.
And that's still the case.
Still the case, and all of the new.
I I thought Mike was up when uh.
That's what you thought, no, but I will now.
No, I thought Mike did a couple weeks.
Williams?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not very, he hadn't been able to.
We're gonna, we we already have, we.
I work, oh, I see, okay. So Joelle and I, we're we're good. I talked to Mike, I did talk to Mike this week. Oh, you know, one thing, um Madam Planning Commission Chair, uh Madam Commission Member. Would you kindly send me every month the agendas that you have, unless you happen to have them? The reason is, the the O'Neals pointed out, the agendas for the planning commission, they're like from twenty twenty-two. They've been updated on the website since then.
And I've been sending them, but they tend to be very.
You're sending them after, it's gotta be the day before.
Oh, is that right?
That's why I will not put them up, because it's not applicable.
Oh, yes.
Day before the meeting.
So try to do it at least twenty-four hours ahead of time.
Exactly, three, four hours ahead.
Okay, so send that to me and maybe even text me, because sometimes I can miss an email.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh now, quickly about this order or Stella's stuff. So we have, okay, that's, I'm gonna table that, I don't think we need to talk about that right now. Juneteenth, Black History Month proclamations are now in the in the hands of our. Okay, so Stella will.
We read it.
Joyce Moncrief, uh dispositions.
So basically, we have to look at whether or not we want to do this remote access.
Oh, okay, okay.
The remote access stuff. So I I heard from two orders that it's that going to QuickBooks Online is.
A nightmare.
Unlabeled.
I've heard you.
So did you hear that from other than Stu?
No, I just was standing here when you said.
Oh, from. Yeah. So we're gonna have to decide, I have to figure out which what to go to, because I I think this exchange. So apparently, by the way, according to GoTo, it was Stella who initiated this request. According to GoTo, Stella initiated the request for the remote access.
I know.
So, at first, it was fifteen dollars a month, we thought, okay, no big deal, then when it turned into ninety dollars a month. Okay, so.
Well, I think, I think the only advantage of having the QuickBooks online, I mean, or a reasonable back simulant, would be the fact that if we would not have to do that physical transfer of the laptop.
Correct.
And I would, I would not be out of that lot, once a month, Stella takes, Stella's our camp. Um, like, she, I do all the the entering and the, and the reports and everything like that, but Stella is like, she does the, um, end of month reports, she does reconciliations, and it's a very, it's been a wonderful peace of mind thing for me, because I know that things are going where they should be going and things like that, so, just to let everybody know why.
The, the need for it, and that's fine.
Yeah, what Stella is in, so it checks and balances.
I think it's good to have an auditor, and it's good, but it doesn't really, to me, make sense for a long-term solution, either doing the handoff or doing the remote access, I think the long-term solution has to be cloud-based tools, both logging, when everyone.
Well, that's the thing, if we, and, and like you said, we would have licenses, and it would be a great thing, because it would be real so much.
Right. Right.
You know, I mean, like, I wouldn't have to wait until I got my computer back to enter any of the invoices, she wouldn't have to wait until I have everything under to give to her
Right. Correct.
so that she would do the reconciliations and stuff like that, so, I mean, so I guess the thing is, we're doing it now, John and I talked about, you know, um, I will, um, probably be out of the country, um, towards the end of the year, because I'm going to be a mom again.
Right.
And, um, so anyway, uh, so we talked about if there would be a way that I would be able to take the laptop, switch, like, and then if we can hook it up immediately to a printer.
What we should do is try to do before the end of the year.
We're gonna have to do a lot.
Yeah, we're talking about all those for that.
Try to go to the cloud thing, yeah, before the end of the year.
Okay, we're gonna do a lot of that kind of stuff, yeah, so it wouldn't be, I wouldn't be leaving till.
Right.
So.
We would do it at least two months in advance.
So, oh, that's. Oh, yeah.
We would have a live live on.
If you just drive around.
We should at least try to get it, yeah, okay, so I will follow up with that and try to see, and maybe we can have you demo both, you know, the, 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 the one that Ms. Borders recommends is Patriot.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
So maybe we could see if.
And, and would they, would the Patriot people be able to upload all of our?
I could find that out.
That's the kind of things, that's, those are the kind of questions that I would.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, I, I mean, yeah, it was, uh, she was extremely, uh, extremely pleased with the server she got from Patriot.
From Patriot.
Uh, you know, they helped out a lot with her issues with QuickBooks Online, uh, even though QuickBooks Online is still trying to, you know, be her best friend, and, you know, she canceled the contract six months ago, you know, it was like, they just never got the memo.
Yes.
But is the template of the software similar to?
We'll have to find that out.
Yeah, that, that, that.
That's the kind of question.
Yeah, that I can't answer, but.
That concludes my report, Mr. President, thank you, thank you very much, any questions for the mayor? Seeing them on, uh, Borough Manager, Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. President, I know mine will be a little longer, but. So, we just finished negotiations with the swim club on a three-year lease, the current one actually expires in May of twenty-five. Uh, we will actually give it to council to vote on at our council meeting, if you guys approve it. Basically, it is a twenty percent increase what they pay right now, and that's basically almost a pass-through, because our costs over the last three years have also increased twenty percent. Um, we were able to, we were able to negotiate a set.
A set price.
Between the, yeah, three years.
For three years.
Which is why we can do it with them.
Right.
Because that would be good. Uh, the other thing I have, this, uh, update on where we are with the building, at this point, everything looks good, looks like we have a hard-moving date of the twenty-first. Uh, at this point, I mean, I don't think weather's ever gonna hold us back on anything, because we're.
Of this month?
Of this month, no, it looks like we will be in there within three weeks.
He's moving to, he's moving to phase one, so that they can destroy the.
Right, 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 that's all that means.
We're not open to the building just yet.
Yeah.
We still need our hard hats.
Yes, uh, you'll need hard hats until the drop ceilings go in, then nothing can fall on you anymore, so you would be able to come in if you. Right. Uh, that's really long hat.
That's how you do it. Any questions for the Borough Manager? Thank you very much, thank you for, uh, tell, tell you my first thank you, let you, let you stay on.
Thank you. Sure is fine, I can, sure.
Considering all the stuff we have going on, considering the building is not likely to be done until July.
July, yeah.
Yeah, and there's always something that goes on, all right, uh, Solicitor, Mr. Ron Ho is with us today.
Yes.
And, anything for us?
I, I have nothing in public for the group.
Okay, very good, I know that there's been some things back and forth, but they haven't come up yet, any questions for the Solicitor? Seeing them on, uh, Treasurer, are you ready?
Thank you, Mr. President, um, March thirty-first was the last day of our discount period for taxes, um, we have a, um, we had gotten a large amount of, of taxes, and as a matter of fact, um, it's, um, it, it came in on the thirty-first, another month, but over a million dollars, which, um, is really awesome, and very much needed, so that's very good, so, um, if any residents have not paid their taxes, and they are the person that pays the taxes, um, they'll now pay in the, in the face of the year period, so.
And that's what to land in June.
Till the end of June, yeah, and then after that, they'll get kind of good, after that, and, um, naturally, my, my biggest part of my thing, and I, we did get a notification today, another three hundred dollars came into our account for, um, EIT, but I'm kind of waiting for lucky.
Yeah, well, it's probably gonna be similar.
So, I appreciate the fact that you, um, have, you know, initiated the, you know, to remind the residents that if you can, just pull your things out of the room, but, so.
It's pretty much similar to the end, they don't have to submit it until the end of April, so that's what's gonna happen.
So, we might get a big chunk.
What's gonna be the end of April?
April, yeah.
Let's hope it's what we're hoping for.
Yes, fingers crossed.
What are, all right, anything else? Congratulations on being.
Thank you, yeah.
For the second time. Any questions for the Treasurer? Seeing them moving on, Chief.
Uh, I only have a couple things, uh, our new police vehicle is being outfitted at KML in Aston, um, what I'm told, it should, the outfit should be completed, hopefully, by the end of this week. And then you have to go back to the dealership for prep work and inspection, and quickly after that, we'll get it in, and then ship it to be striped and stuff. So, I don't have a projection date, that just provide me from the dealership, when we'd be getting it from that, but, uh, the majority of the work, the prep work should be done, outfit work should be done by the end of this week, so that's good. Um, as far as our new recording system, uh, their info sharers, engineers are working on our system, as we currently speak. Um, we don't have a complete, um, projection as a, as a start date of, of going live, however, um, it should be sometime in May.
Okay.
Uh, we are, are looking at the second week in May for our officers to be trained.
Right.
So, that's coming on, uh, pretty, pretty quickly for us, they push us way ahead, we have other contracts with other states and stuff, order accounts, they wanted to get us done quick. So that helps us out immensely, um, we, we've spoken about our candidate, uh, for part-time, who's going through our background process. Um, good thing about her is if, if everything goes well, and we swear her in, she does have, uh, a number of years, about four years, law enforcement experience in our area. Uh, working for another police department as a part-time officer, and she's also a county sheriff, uh, so she does that full-time, and, um, she does have some areas, uh, where, that she's certified in, I believe, we're sending her to, um, ordinance disposal, because the sheriff's actually encompassed that for the county, so, uh, maybe a bomb tech or stuff like that.
One.
Uh, and everything, uh, so, uh, we're pretty excited about, uh, bringing her on board, provided that the rest of the background is well, uh, and, and everything, um. The only other thing I have is, um, the monthly school bus violations, um, there were seventy-nine total reviews and fifty confirmed violations.
Wow.
For the month, so what I have the last two months, that this has been up and running, we've been averaging about fifty violations in one.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, any, are you done, Chief?
That's, that's all, yeah.
I have, I have a question for you, the color of the vehicle is gonna be white, and it's a.
White.
It should.
It's a Silverado.
Yeah, which has got a, a small bed in the back, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, and that's what police departments are moving to, because it's less expensive.
Well, it, it's not necessarily, it's the utility purposes of it, I mean, we are, have been tasked more and more with transporting barricades, cones, things of that nature, trying to get all that stuff in the back of an SUV where we already have equipment, is kind of cumbersome and can cause damage, you know, so, on a utility standpoint, it just made sense for us to get at least one pickup for that type of thing, and it, it, it's also, it's a set of cast, so, it's actually a regular patrol vehicle, you're able to transport prisoners, has everything that SUV or a vehicle would have, it just has a covered bed in the, in the back.
Sensible, I have another question, are we paying that lease monthly, is that what we decided?
Yearly.
Annual.
We paid an annual lease, okay.
Annual, and it won't start till twenty twenty-sixth.
Next year.
April of twenty twenty-sixth.
Councilwoman.
This ties into the bus thing, topic for newsletter, if it doesn't make sense for spring, it should be on the list for the fall, a bus that says, remember, stop for school buses, or it will cost you three hundred dollars.
That's a good idea.
I'd put it on the LED side of it. August.
The majority, obviously, of the violations, the vehicles traveling the other way, we're, we're not getting really vehicles passing school buses, like, coming from behind.
Drive like a big.
Something like.
Everything is going in the opposite direction, so, uh, that, that works.
That sounds.
It's, it's, it, one of those things, if, the more we remind people, the better, it's why we have to say, remember to cut your grass, remember to clean your, clean up your leaves, remember to stop at stop signs, remember to stop for school buses, just.
It's three hundred dollars.
Remember saying. For the two recycling dumpsters.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Just pour grease down your drain.
The question. When, so the question, when there's a school bus, uh, that has its yellow lights on, approaching a stop and or stop, and then yellow lights are on, and you are, um, um, approaching from the opposite direction. You're approaching at a slow speed, anticipating the red lights turn on, and then as you are, and they don't turn on it, as you bypass the, the school bus, they go on.
Yeah. Yeah, right, I've had that actually happen to me.
That happened to me, that happened to buddy.
That happened to me too, yeah. So, so what it is.
How does that work?
So, everything is recorded, and that's why it comes down to the police, individual police departments to review the, just go, okay, what type of violation it's in? Is it a clear-cut violation, which is, which we are, such, or which we are approving, or is it a situation like that? The school buses are supposed to, the driver's supposed to, um, a hundred and twenty feet prior to the stop, they're supposed to turn yellow lights on. I know for a fact that I see school bus drivers turn the yellow lights on about three seconds before the stop, and then the red lights come on, and you're like, I don't know where the stop is, and now I'm halfway through the school bus, and something like that, that's why it's reviewed by an officer, because we, we are seeing that, and I know it's, it's happened to me, Ryan was next to the school bus.
Yep.
It had no lights on, and when my flow of traffic started moving, I knew was going, and then when I looked in the rearview mirror, I, the red lights were on at that point.
Yeah.
As I was coming towards the, and I was just like, well, um, you know, what do you do, you know?
Exactly, so, probably the opposite, where the, the lights are yellow.
Right, right.
Or so long.
Right, and you don't know, and you're allowed to proceed because they're yellow.
Right, of course.
Those are amber, so, that's why it comes down to an officer review, always, it comes down to an officer review.
I, I mean, well, you know, it's like, because in, in, in my case, you know, I was going down Springfield Road in Clifton Heights, and, you know, he had his lights on as he's rolling down, then he stops, the lights are still yellow, I'm like, ah, what's going on here, I was like, I guess he's waiting for someone to come out before he finally throws on the red flappers. And as soon as, you know, I was past his front bumper, almost, you know, even with him, and all of a sudden, that stop sign comes out, I'm reading the red lights going on, it's like.
I actually saw a school bus, I, it, it, I saw it from, I actually saw a school bus with the red lights on, and the bus driver waving a car to pass it.
Yeah, there you go.
And I'm just like.
Come get con, buddy, come get con.
I was just like, okay, that is like, what is going on here, you know, it wasn't in our jurisdiction, uh, but, uh, nonetheless, I'm like, that is crazy, you know, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
Uh, let me just, yes, so the yellow light, before they go to red, the yellow light has to come on?
Yes.
Because I went one today, where I, I must have blinked when it, it went from nothing to a red, was all I saw, I never saw a yellow.
Yeah, there's.
And the car in front of me, thank gosh, stopped, because there was a kid crossing, and it was so fast, because he never really.
Right.
Let you know in advance.
And that's why I said, like, the, the bus drivers are actually required to, for about a hundred, a hundred and twenty feet prior to the stop, turn the amber lights on.
So can we get them a ticket when they help?
Yeah, we can contact the, uh, the, uh, transportation.
Any other questions for the Chief, thank you very much for finally getting rid of our, uh, police unit.
Yeah, that, oh, that was shipped out, was ripped, stripped down, and that'll actually gonna go, is gonna go to auction. So, whatever we get for that goes into an account, uh, through the, the leasing company, I've released in the Silverado through.
Right.
And will actually, um.
Will it reduce our payments, or?
No, it'll go towards the next, any next type of purchase or lease or whatever, so.
Very good. Uh, the other question, move on, reports of the council committee's finance, Councilwoman Smythe, who's with us despite the middle of tax season, we appreciate the venue.
So, just in event no one knows, or someone does not know, April fifteenth deadline. Last Saturday, we had, um, a listening session.
I too.
It was for safety and health, and, um, I used to be there, and the mayor, and the president, and also, um, uh, Councilwoman, it's not, not letters, it's, uh. The other shoe.
Don't put grease down the drain.
I live near the Giant, that's why, yeah. And, and, um.
And two other people.
And two other people.
If two of them were in the audience, right?
So. And, um. Um, our Joyce was trying her best to get there, but it, it didn't work, but we held her on board, and she gave us lots of prayers so we could.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, some of the things that we discussed when we were there, uh, we came up with a list of things that we wanted to, to help, um, all the residents. So, one of the things was, what, um, was considering the help there, if we could do that, also taking about, um, a cleanup day. I, I actually had a neighbor come to me and say, what are we doing about cleaning all of them, and I said, that's something neighbors should be doing, so, or we're thinking if we could come up with a lock cleanup day, that everyone, that hopefully, there'll be enough of us to participate, come up with a date this summer, and everyone would be, would just kind of clean up.
I'm gonna be a rep.
Or the opens is, is Saturday. It is, yeah, and I, I remember. Why clean up? Yeah, I remember when you said the, the trucks go through the street and sweep the streets and all of that, well, we don't have that, so it's gonna be our residents. Um, the other thing is we're thinking about, um, pet care as well, and, um, and then we're going to continue to, um, we're gonna see if we can have other departments have these listening sessions, so that we know what the, the residents are looking for, what, where their head is. I, I also brought some forms for people, if, um, tax forms, so that, because this time of the year, you may have to pay a tax, whether it's federal or state, but I bought a federal tax form, helping people, and some people did take those forms to increase their withholdings, because they don't want to pay next year, there's another tax form that, um, I, I had out, and it was for, it's a Pennsylvania form, not just for all the residents, and if your income is low, and you're over sixty-five, you're sixty in a will, or over sixty-five, you could qualify for as much as a thousand dollars, and that form doesn't have to be in right away, in fact, I had a friend who worked at the office, they took care of this, this, um, form, and she said, don't mail it before April fifteenth. And the reason for that is because people are so busy, that office is swamped, trying to get the Pennsylvania, the regular Pennsylvania tax returns out. And, but now it's online, so you can do it online, uh, but if you do it online, you have to put all your documents there, you mail it, you still gotta see your documents. So, I gave information about that as well, and I, we consider it a successful listening session, so we're gonna follow up and see what we can do to help all of them out. And that's all I have.
I remember, is any question for the Councilwoman? I know that Councilwoman Kelly enjoyed marking her chart on the wall.
I do love doing that.
Thank you very much for the, the two sessions, it was, the first one was well-attended, this one, there were people that came that weren't at the first one, so.
And, and. I had loads of ideas.
Yeah.
And we had a couple of, uh, officers that came, just really nice, so, um, it was, it was still. And they had good ideas. And they had good ideas, they did, so hope I'm right.
I said it was the politicians and the police. See any other questions, thank you, Mike, uh, Public Works, Mr. Borders.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, um, every, our underground infrastructure, for the most part, is in good condition, as far as I'm aware, um, you had the issue on West Wing that other people have been alerting me to, was it two oh four West Wing?
Yeah, we have to go talk to a resident.
Um, are you available this Friday?
Yeah.
Okay, so then sometime.
I'm off, I'm on Friday, as everyone knows.
Okay.
Starting to use some of my days.
Okay.
But just to give you a heads up, I actually talked to Mike Barnhart today.
Okay.
So, actually, it's more, so, I am doing a walk, uh, Tuesday, on the. So, actually, it's more than that. So I am doing a walk uh Tuesday on the road program for twenty twenty-five. And we are meeting in the three hundred block Walt Avenue, just to go over all the latels that were not done last year, so at least we can complete Alden Avenue, which hasn't been done at least twenty-five.
Okay, very good. And I think we're also developing a small issue on Sycamore?
South and north.
Uh north, North Sycamore. Um.
At Providence?
It's only two blocks. It's it's it's, it's down towards Wayne Avenue. Uh the first house on the left, I think, our first or second house on the left. I'm not sure where that corner house is, I'll hand. Uh but I believe it's the Ivory Residence. There's a depression in the middle of the street where it started.
They're on Bonsel, they're on Bonsel.
Oh, is that Bonsel? Okay.
I thought you were talking about Bonsel.
Yeah, no, that's not Bonsel Ward. Yeah, cause I noticed that last night when I was leaving the Legion meeting. Yeah, I was like, oh yeah, I was like.
See, then.
I was like, yeah, I think that's what it is, so.
Or her mom is across the street.
Yeah, it's kind of in the center of the street, so I'm not sure which way it's going.
I know.
Uh but I I I think that's about it.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Any questions for the councilman? Uh when you're walking, you will see the sidewalks that have collapsed where they did, where they did work on the sewer lines.
Sure.
I guess they didn't amp it down correctly or something. Uh you'll also, you'll see there's a couple of curbs that got hit. Uh they have recordings of that.
Yeah.
So, all right. Uh moving on, Public Health, Councilwoman Kelly.
All right. Hazardous waste collection is coming up. It's Saturday, April the twelfth, down at the Emergency Services Training Center, sixteen hundred Capkin Hook Road, and did that make it on the website, Mr. Mayor?
I, my apologies, I didn't hear what you were saying. I was reading a text message.
Yes, I'm looking at the website right now.
Thank you, Councilwomen.
You do have to make a reservation to go. All the information's on the website. There's one May tenth, September sixth, and October eleventh. They are around the whole county. The sixth, September sixth is back at the training center, which is one of the closest ones for us. Um, on the Saturday, April the twenty-sixth, we have a very busy day. Darby Creek Cleanup will be down at the swimming pool and our Alden's half of the Clifton Heights Alden Recycling Program. We will be having the East Cycling Program from nine to noon, and Drug Takeback will also be available. So bring your stuff with cords, bring your unneeded medicines and whatnot, and get rid of them. And they will be taken care of properly. And a thank you to Councilwoman Smythe for a lovely update of our two listening sessions, and we really do hope to do some more. So hang in there, people. We got more to come.
Thank you very much.
I'm done, thank you.
Any questions for the councilwoman? Something popped into my mind. I can't remember otherwise. I'll just run right out.
Sorry.
Yeah, well, uh, that's all right.
It'll come to you.
On the twenty-sixth, I also had.
Oh, well, this this, thank you. The Swim Club actually have an open house uh that afternoon. That was one of the mailer that went out. So the twenty, the twenty-sixth and the twelfth are very busy days.
Yeah, that was tough.
Oh, okay.
Hopefully, we get some residents, because we will not have scouts this year to help out. They've helped us a lot, so. Come one, come all. All right, thank you. Any questions? Seeing them moving on the highway, Mr. Walker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so it's springtime, which means we have a lot of rain, uh and one thing that I've noticed with the uh Albert Magnolia, since that's where I live, the the inlets are starting to become covered with uh debris, so whether they are the sweet gum balls, uh clippings, what have you, so just reminding those residents that live there, and that's a new one, so the residents around there will have to clean up the inlets because they're filling up and they're just diverting water past the the inlet, so making sure that we clean those up. Um, I don't know if this is more ordinance or uh something to check out, but as, and this is related to to water as well, on Beach, at at the corner of Beach and Magnolia, there's a house that had a lateral, I believe a lateral um uh redone. Their yard is still full of uh, well, they didn't seed it, and so it's it's all full of dirt, and the dry, and the sidewalk is just gravel. And then where the inlet is, uh in the easement, or not the inlet, the um, so let's stick up, in in the easement, uh now with the rain, it has all depressed. So it's a giant hole at this.
You're saying the sidewalk is actually like a modified stone or something?
It's just gravel.
Well, that we can take care of.
So I don't I don't know if it's the homeowner's responsibility, but
Absolutely.
since the rain, um that that mud and all of the dirt has washed away, and now it's kind of like a a hole.
No excuse this time of year.
Okay.
Do we know when that was done, the lateral? No, but in January, we would say, okay, in February.
Yeah.
You know, you usually put the gravel or modify it or something until it's warm enough to do the concrete, but not at this point.
Yeah, so I just wanted to bring that up, just in case anybody's walking, uh, cause it used to just be flat.
We will send a, I'll send somebody by.
A big hole. So, um, okay. And then the last thing that I have, uh, for the rectors, the uh plant and seed exchange was this past Saturday. My son had a a game in Mechanicsburg, so I wasn't able to be there, but I'll open up to the floor. I know Melissa was there. She helps spearheaded. Um, how did it go? I saw pictures. I assume it went very well. I've heard good things.
It was a success for our second um time around. It is basically a free event um that we spent zero dollars on, and then next year, got some ideas. Had some pull some, not a lot, but we want to get kids more involved next year. But it was a, it was a great event. It was a lot, I mean.
It was a great event.
Jade tree commission.
Yeah.
Came out to advertise. Uh we had a lot of people. Some people weren't even from Alden who came, but they were from the local area.
Yeah.
Which is okay. It's, we wanna, you know, get with everybody, and there was a lot of networking, a lot of neighborly communications, a lot of exchange of plans, a lot of exchanging of knowledge, so um, yeah, it was a great.
They collected a lot of it.
And by the way, uh, I found a home for all the plants that were leftover.
Thank you.
Yes.
Have they been on the ground? Have they pulled on the ground?
No, 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 it's uh uh, so, uh, the people that live next to Caroline McKernan, they were, they were at the neighborhood over here. I was like, you're a plant, maybe, would you like some plants here?
Perfect.
And then he runs away.
Yes, so uh, yes, I, yeah, they were, they were rehearing before I left.
Great. Uh, that's everything on my my list.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the councilman?
I was gonna say that Joe seemed to be received very well with his expertise, so I appreciated that.
Talking about the master gardener.
Yeah.
He was, he was very good. He did a very good presentation. And a nice, you know, all sorts of material with that.
Yeah.
Very good, nice person.
Thank, thank, thanks too for connecting.
It was Sue's idea, the whole planning team.
That's right.
Yes.
So please, let her know. Thank you. Lawn ordinance, Councilwoman Blunt.
Thank you. Um, regular stuff mostly going on. Um, I will say that the Fourth of July Planning Meeting, First Planning Meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, the eighth, which is next. Um, and it pops into my brain, cause I was trying to put together the notes, we're always looking for vendors, and if you're thinking about healthcare, or pet safety, or things like that, and that might be a space where if there's somebody or a vendor of some sort that might want to come out and do free blood pressure testing or something like that, that might be a good place for them to to come out, um, to to join for that, so. I would welcome any suggestions you all have for getting a vendor to.
Close it, David.
The planning meeting is April the eighth.
You're at seven, you're having a block.
Yeah.
Seven.
Um, there is a calendar invite. If you're not on it, please let me, do you want me to include all of Council? Well, I can include all of Council. Do you guys want to come?
April eight?
April eighth.
It's Saturday.
At seven. Yeah, Marini.
Well, at least like, one was like a first class, that's nice, my guy. Plus, our June tea planning committee across the table, so it's a lot of.
Yeah, again, I understand.
I will be there.
I'll, I'll be there representing the.
Sure, okay, thank you. I'm I'm hoping to do that.
Seth.
And uh, that. That is good.
Any questions for the councilman? I will say, a number of years ago, through a booster member, Mr. Dutner, does a little town. There was a gentleman that did bring uh birds. He had a setup, and you could go into there, and he was, he thought, it was good, the kids were there. That was something that was unusual, though, only for a couple of years, so.
I remember that.
Yeah, yeah.
I know some vendors that were looking to sell certain things that can auction, or are they more sort of free?
No, it's basically, fourth of July is whatever booth is there, they sell it, that's fine. As long as they register with us.
Big squeeze sells have one.
Yeah, yeah.
Um.
More to marry.
Okay, true.
Uh, yeah, I think the uh, the Legion's probably gonna look at setting, setting up a booth or, or working on a fundraiser for the Legion.
Hey Dan, any idea what we're gonna do with the flag? Will the boycotts, will they show up someone to participate?
You should have the Legion do it.
That's okay.
Yeah, we could, you know, the way.
The Legion, I think, has three events on the Fourth of July.
We'll figure out something. You know, I hadn't thought about that, but you're true.
Or maybe, maybe the boosters.
Well, anyway, seed planted, think about the things. I will send out the the notes, but that's.
Uh, thank you all very much. Public Safety, Vice President Lambert, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. President. The um, I'll have the um fire and police reports for the council meeting. Um, we've already spoken about public safety and public health, um, listening session. We are uh planning for June tea, which is June twenty-first at, uh from eleven to three at the Alden Elementary School. We are also getting vendors and doing some planning. Planning is going well. We have had three meetings.
Great, yes.
And uh using AI companion, we're taking notes, it's a lot of.
How did that go?
Uh I think it went well. Lotto's gonna let, let us know, but the other one is what we would have written probably on two pages, I think it was five pages.
Right.
So it's taking copious smoots. Very detailed, very detailed note. So that's going well. Um, in addition to that, with what we have planned for the newsletter, there'll be some public safety tips for that. What does that do?
Why don't we, why don't you try to get it to me, like, by the, by this weekend?
Okay.
Because I want to try to have it all, like, I want to try to have it drafted by like the middle of next week. And then maybe we could try to have it done by the next weekend, if it's on.
Yeah, that, for my work schedule, that would be.
That would be good?
Yeah, me and them.
Okay, like the twelfth and thirteenth, that's agreed. So that'll be the, to try to have all content to me, anyone that wants content? The end of this weekend, so by the sixth. Preferably, you know, earlier, the earlier the better, because I'll probably be working on drafting stuff this weekend as well.
Okay, and I think that one of the things that we've been putting off is um meeting with the chief on a more regular basis to just try to make sure we have some updates and.
Were we thinking of doing another meet the chief? I haven't talked to the chief about this.
Yeah, with a weather break.
Put a good one in the spot, you know, you wouldn't mind, right?
I love it.
You love it.
I'm talking about commits.
Definitely ice cream, the ice cream. Ice cream.
Not going with.
Ice, not without ice cream, like, not the ice cream.
That was a big hit.
That's right.
That was a big hit.
I love it.
All the flavors still.
Yeah.
Right.
And I think the officers did, the residents did, and those who came, they really, they enjoyed that.
It was good, so the manager.
But um just continuing to look and see what we can do for safety, and see in the borough, in and around the borough. So those are the things that I have, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Any question to the councilman, Mr. Farnum?
About Vice President, uh what time does the June tea start again? I'm sorry.
Eleven AM to three PM. There will be some um additional information on, you know, that will have vendors and gangs and all of those things will be coming out. We will be working on a flyer.
And it will be at the school, but not the front of the school.
It'll be at the Alden Elementary, yes.
It is obviously in the back. The front is all construction down. Still have to go meet the new custodian.
Okay, thank you. Well, we have a, we have an approval from.
We have an approval. In fact, they're, they, they told the people who had booked it for the community group. That's okay. Not even all their residents.
Priority, yes.
Right. Was there a. Football club, not youth group.
I've got a question about.
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute. Are they gonna be using the fields? Or they have to go through the rectory?
No, I rehandle it.
Listen, this guy laid down the law.
He took care of it.
He laid down the law. They, they were, they were booking for the school. Correct. Only during the school day. So Mr. Mr. White explained that they. So it's fine. Hopefully, the school district is.
To the school district.
As, no, it's the person. Not to the person. I don't deal with the person. Well, he's gonna, he should come to you, they asked for. Well, he should have, that's why. Correct.
I'm questioning about Fourth of July.
What?
Fourth of July, uh, uh, at what time do you raise the flag?
Somewhere around noon time, it depends.
Okay.
It depends on, cause the parade's supposed to start at eleven, and it's usually wrapped up in about thirty-five minutes. If people come, we have people coming to the parade, we're like, we're at the tail end of the parade route, starting at eight, nine o'clock and more, so. Sometimes I'm standing there with no bands because they haven't got here yet. So normally, it's around noon time, twelve to twelve-thirty.
Okay.
You guys might be already over in East Lansdowne, though, because there's an East Lansdowne parade.
Yeah, they've got a a third parade commitment in East Lansdowne.
Did you do Lansdowne, Alden, and East Lansdowne? East Lansdowne is the last on the list at about twelve-thirties.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I said, uh, all right, I'll 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 tell them it'll be around, around noon.
Yeah, if if I, I mean, we'll come up with something else, but, cause I know you guys have a community.
Right, yeah.
Two things I have. First of all, we're looking to hire a fire mission.
Yes.
We have two applicants. I wanted to ask, Chief, there was that fire on West Rively, that was a deep, thank gosh, it was a detached garage, so it didn't spread to the house. Um, any news on that at all? Cause I know you had to call in, Mr. Stowe, too. One of the applicants, by the way. We just haven't finished interviewing everything yet.
Yeah, um, right now, it's it's undetermined in the event area of origin. Um, but it's, it's undetermined. They can't rule out one of the vehicles with a possible electrical issue. Or there was also potentially a reported maybe burning, some booms. Um, also. Right now, it's, again, we have an area of origin, but it's just, it can't be one hundred percent determined.
Was the vehicle involved, it, was it an electric vehicle by any chance? That was, okay. Were there chemicals?
It smelled like it, there was.
So there were gasoline cans and stuff like that that were present um with the vehicle, so.
Okay.
Um, but inside.
Across the street, and there were, there were booms.
Yeah, yeah, there was probably, well, also, what what you'll also have, especially with vehicle fires, a lot of times you hear that boom, it's the tires going.
Uh, I think so.
The tires will blow, and they catch fire. That's usually what it, what that is, but there were some gasoline in there too, as well, but I guess, as I said, um can't a hundred percent say this is what caused that, but we kind of know where it started, so.
See, then, moving on, upcoming meetings, all will be held here at John P. McLean Community Center. Next Tuesday, at seven PM, is gonna be the Fourth of July. Planning Commission will be here on Thursday, the tenth. The council meeting will be Wednesday, the sixteenth. Uh, as you just heard, we're gonna post online that the uh, I guess we'll call it Chief Advisory Committee will be meeting here on, is that a Monday, the thirtieth?
That's Wednesday.
So Wednesday, the thirtieth?
So fifth Wednesday of the month.
Fifth Wednesday of the month, there's nothing going on. Meeting here at seven thirty in this building. You want it in the calendar? What do you, where do you want it on the website? You want me to put it, like, post it on the, the main page? Let's, like. You gotta, I don't, I have to, they double check with Mr. Neil. He said he thought the thirtieth was the date, and I, so let's make sure that that happens. Um, then we have our caucus meeting here on the seventh. The rector board is due to meet at May, uh, due to meet Monday, the twelfth. And the Civil Service Commission was not meeting this month, but they'll be back in session. And the Civil Service Commission was not meeting this month, but they'll be back in session on May the fourteenth. We're seeing that, any privileges on the floor? Mr. Feinberg had his hand up first, and it's, go ahead, Mr. Feinberg. Burning his booster hat, so here goes.
Yeah.
The twelfth of April is a big day in Moldova.
Twelfth of April is a big day in Alden, yes, it is. Uh, first, there is the Legion Breakfast, that will start early, it is ten dollars. Come one, come all, let's support the Legion. All Day will be the youth club having their opening day. Uh, that'll be before and after the Easter egg hunt. And the Easter egg hunt for the Alden Boosters, uh, hosted by the Alden Boosters, uh, will be at, uh, between twelve and two o'clock. Uh, that should be a, a great event, as the whole entire day of Alden will be. Um, and three weeks later, we will have our plant sale. And I think, you know, we get asked all the time, when's the plant sale? When's the plant sale? People love it. And I, uh, I'm hoping that we get, uh, weather holds up. Last year, we had some rain and people came anyway. But hopefully this year, uh, we'll have a sunny day and even more will come. So, uh, that will be, it is on the dirt, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
With the rain date of the tenth.
Yeah. And, well, okay. Uh, rain date, the tenth, but we'll probably muddle through it one way or the other. Uh, and it will start early because, uh, people like to, to line up early. And it'll run most of the day into the early, at least early afternoon. And as always, I, uh, ask for a membership. And if you are a man between eighteen and nine hundred and twenty-five, you are welcome to join us. Our next meeting is next Wednesday, and what is that, the ninth? And that's our, I'm sorry, that's our board meeting. Uh, the, our general meeting is the twenty-third. Uh, come one, come all, doors open at seven thirty. Uh, meeting starts at eight o'clock. And of course, there is food and goodies, so please, you're welcome to come. That's all.
Just to give times, the Legion Breakfast is between eight and eleven, which will be in the Legion Building, which is across the parking lot here. The parade is going to start at nine o'clock for the opening day and the T-ball. And then the booster thing, actually, I think we, they're giving up the fields at eleven thirty for we can set up. And then hopefully, we'll be done by one, so we can clean up and they can go back. And they have games for little older kids in the afternoon. So I hope that's a big day. And we put that all in the flyer about EIT, so we gave people notice, the twelfth and the twenty-sixth are a big day in Alden. Jennifer Ratchigan, you had your hand up.
Yeah, just had an idea about who could raise the flag. Why don't we invite the girls who won the, the soccer championship?
The basketball championship?
Basketball, yeah.
That's a good idea.
That's all.
All right, I'll get in touch with Matt.
Okay, yeah, because I, you know, I've been contacting the Legion.
You can't do it, you guys got too much going on.
No, they said there might be some members who don't go to East Lansdowne.
And by the way, we need you guys frying the hot dogs.
Yeah.
No, that's the boosters.
That's the booster. Right, but half the boosters are American Legion members. Probably just trying to get out of it. If you can give me a definitive answer, if it's not available, which I'm not, it's not, not right now.
Right.
Shortly, then we'll go, we have time, then we'll go in another direction.
Yeah, because I heard from Larry and, and her already, so, Larry, I have a feeling.
Does the high school have an ROTC program?
Not that I'm aware of, no. All right, and just an FYI, the message board is down until, uh, I guess, till we reconnect the electricity to it.
Oh.
I thought, yeah, in front of the building, because they are regrading. So we turn the power off.
Okay.
Without that, uh, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Vice President Lambert, in a second, from the entire side. Thank you all for telling Alden's in favor. I, the approach. Thank you all. Good meeting.